I'd like to recognize the Majority Leader.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we revert back to motions.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and colleagues. Madam Speaker, under motions, I move that we place Bill 401-31, introduced by V.C. Panglinen, and it's an act exempt maps of the Chamois Land Trust lease sites previously approved by the Chamois Land Trust Commission from the requirements of Article 2, Chapter 62 of the Guam Code Annotated Relative to Submission and Recordation Procedures. As Chairman of the Committee on Rules, I'm asking, along with the sponsor, Madam Speaker, that you waive the public hearing requirements simply because this is a matter that's been addressed by this body and has had a public hearing, and because it's the same subject matter, I'm appealing to you to agree, Madam Speaker, that it meets this requirement in a declaration of such waiver.
Yes, and it has met the requirements of the law and our standing rules, so I will certify then that it is the exact same content, subject area, and it has had a public hearing.
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
So let me gavel that in.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So having heard that I moved that this bill number 401-31 be placed at the top of the second reading file.
Okay. And that motion without objections, ordered, and I recognize then the primary author, Senator Panglinen, on Bill 401-31 LS.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, we're doing this to facilitate the opportunity to have these maps approved and as individuals access use of their property for the purpose of being able to apply for loans and most basically the basic utilities. One amendment I'd like to offer is to add in the title, it's Chapter 62, Title 21.
Can you please make the motion that...
Oh, I moved that the bill be placed in the third reading file?
Yes, and you proceed then to discuss it.
And I'd like to amend the bill so that the title reads Article 2, Chapter 62, Title 21.
Title 21.
Right.
To add on the title. Yes. Okay, on that motion then, without any objections?
And also on line 20 of Page 2, that should also read Title 21.
21 also, Page 2, Line 20, hearing objections, so ordered.
And very quickly, Madam Speaker, I also want to just point out that the bill also makes it very clear that what we're approving here are maps and not sketches. There was some confusion on the interpretation of that, so I just want to point out to the body that on line 2 and line 4, we did make the amendment in this introduction from the original bill to substitute the word "maps" for, I mean sketches for "maps," so it's absolutely clear that we're talking about, you know, maps that approve and conform to the requirements of law. And then, of course, B is the requirement that the maps are approved by the, I'm sorry, on Chapter Subsection C on Page 3, that the future subdivisions then will make sure that we conform to all the requirements of law, not only for mapping purposes but for subdivision purposes so that we can do better planning in the execution of the handing out of these leases. So I just wanted to point that out, that C is in this bill as well. And with that, Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that it be placed in the third reading file for a vote.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
That would then be at the bottom of the voting file.
And may I also say that we vote for it without engrossment, Madam Speaker?
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered. Thank you. So we are then now at the voting file. And the first bill that we have is Bill Number 112-31 COR.
Bill Number 112-31 COR, introduced by V. Anthony Ada, an act to authorize the sale of a portion of lot number 87-4-2-R1 not to exceed 114 square meters under the inventory of the Chamois Land Trust Commission.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada?
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada?
Good morning.
Yes.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Duñez?
Yes.
Senator Guthertz?
Yes.
Senator Mabini?
Yes.
Senator Munya Barnes? Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Panglinen?
Aye.
Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez?
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron?
Aye.
Speaker One-Pat?
Pass.
Senator Yamashita?
Aye.
Senator Munya Barnes? Speaker One-Pat?
Pass.
As Senator Guthertz, when you say, can you please state what?
...
112, which is the authorizing the sale of a portion of a lot from the inventory of the Chamois Land Trust Commission.
No, I'm sorry, Madam Speaker, I have to change my vote to no. I thought I was looking at Bill 401. No, my answer, my vote is no.
Okay, so noted.
Speaker One-Pat?
Pass.
Bill Number 112-31 COR received 11 yea votes and 4 nay votes. Bill Number 112-31 COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 207-31 COR.
Bill Number 207-31 COR, as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Public Debt, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land, and further amending it on the floor, introduced by V.C. Panglinen, F.F. Blas Jr., an act to authorize the Department of Land Management to exchange portion of government of Guam land and deed lot number 1 new dash 6 within block number 24, municipality of Pagatnya, through conception F. Christoville pursuant to the recorded probate and civil case CB 230-88, recorded under document number 478218.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada?
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada?
Yes.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Duñez?
Yes.
Senator Guthertz?
Yes.
Senator Mabini?
Yes.
Senator Munya Barnes?
Yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Panglinen?
Aye.
Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez?
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron?
Aye.
Speaker One-Pat?
Aye.
Senator Yamashita?
Bill Number 207-31 received 15 yea votes. Bill Number 207-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 239-31 COR.
Bill Number 239-31 COR, substituted by the Committee on Education and Public Libraries and amended on the floor, introduced by Sam Mabini, Ph.D., Judith P. Guthertz, D.P.A., Judith T. Wampet E.D.D., B.J.F. Cruz, Aileen A. Yamashita, Ph.D., Chris M. Duñez. An act to repeal and reenact Section 411, 4.1 of Chapter 4, Title 17, Guam Code Annotated Relative to Integrating Academic Curriculum and Career and Technical Education into the Guam Department of Education's Basic Curricula and to be known as the College and Career Readiness Act.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada?
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada?
Yes.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Duñez?
Yes.
Senator Guthertz?
Yes.
Senator Mabini?
Yes.
Senator Munya Barnes?
Yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Panglinen?
Aye.
Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez?
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron?
Aye.
Speaker One-Pat?
Aye.
Senator Yamashita?
Bill Number 239-31 received 15 yea votes. Bill Number 239-31 is duly passed by this body. Is that your first? Is that your first bill?
(APPLAUSE).
Very good. Very senior. Bill Number 253-31 COR.
Bill Number 253-31 COR, substituted by the Committee on Rules and amended on the floor, introduced by Chris M. Duñez, Judith T. Wampet E.D.D., an act to add a new section 2110 to Chapter 2, Title 2, Guam Code Annotated, relative to requiring a land zoning consideration report from the Department of Land Management for any zoning legislation.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada?
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada?
Yes.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Duñez?
Yes.
Senator Guthertz?
Yes.
Senator Mabini?
Yes.
Senator Munya Barnes?
Yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Panglinen?
Yes.
Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez?
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron?
Aye.
Speaker One-Pat?
Aye.
Senator Yamashita?
Bill Number 253-31 received 15 yea's. Bill Number 253 is unanimously passed by this body. Bill Number 264-31 COR.
Bill Number 264-31 COR, introduced by Aileen A. Yamashita, Ph.D., an act on man Chapter 9, Division 2 of Title 17, Guam Code Annotated, relative to education and training facilities and opportunities for individuals with disabilities.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada?
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada?
Yes.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Duñez?
Yes.
Senator Guthertz?
Yes.
Senator Mabini?
Yes.
Senator Munya Barnes?
Yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Panglinen?
Yes.
Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez?
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron?
Aye.
Speaker One-Pat?
Aye.
Bill Number 264-31 received 15 yea votes. Bill Number 264-31 is unanimously passed by this body. Bill Number 340-31 COR.
Bill Number 340-31 COR, amended on the floor, introduced by R.Z. Rispicio, F.F. Blas Jr., B.J.F. Cruz, V. Anthony Ada, an act on man Sections 2101 and 2101.1 of Chapter 2 of Title 5, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the jurisdiction of the Guam State Clearing House.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada?
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada?
Yes.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Duñez?
Yes.
Senator Guthertz?
Yes.
Senator Mabini?
Yes.
Senator Munya Barnes?
Yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Panglinen?
Yes.
Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez?
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron?
Aye.
Speaker One-Pat?
Aye.
Senator Yamashita?
Bill Number 340-31 received 15 yea votes. Bill 340-31 should unanimously pass by this body. Before I gavel it in, for 340, 15 yea votes? Oh, no, that was, that was, that was deleted.
Not the entire section.
Yeah, just, just the word. Just the nonprofit organization. Okay, no problem then. So then, Bill 340-31 is unanimously passed by this body. Bill Number 343-31 COR.
Bill Number 343-31 COR, amended on the floor, introduced by T.R. Munya Barnes, V.C. Panglinen, Judith T. Wampet E.D.D., an act to add a new article forth to Chapter 50, Division 2, Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, relative to creating the Guam Film Office.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada?
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada?
Yes.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Duñez?
Yes.
Senator Guthertz?
(Coughs).
Senator Mabini? Senator Munya Barnes?
Yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Panglinen? Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez?
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron?
Aye.
Speaker One-Pat?
Aye.
Senator Yamashita?
Yes.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Senator Duñez?
Yes.
Senator Mabini? Senator Duñez?
Bill Number 343-31 received 15 yea votes. Bill 343 is unanimously passed by this body. Merry Christmas, Senator.
(Laughter).
Bill Number 350-31 COR.
Bill Number 350-31 COR, amended on the floor, introduced by M. Silva Tyron, B.J.F. Cruz, Adolfo B. Palacios Sr., and others, an act to add a new section 58110i to Chapter 58, Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the inclusion of local professional advice and support as a condition of benefit for qualifying certificate beneficiaries.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada?
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada?
Yes.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Duñez?
Yes.
Senator Guthertz?
Yes.
Senator Mabini?
Yes.
Senator Munya Barnes?
Aye.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Panglinen?
Yes.
Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez?
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron?
Aye.
Speaker One-Pat?
Aye.
Senator Yamashita?
Bill Number 350-31 received 15 yea votes. So Bill Number 350-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 363-31 LS.
Bill Number 363-31 LS, amended by the Committee on Utilities, Transportation, Public Works, and Veterans Affairs, and further amended on the floor, introduced by T.C. Ada, Judith P. Guthertz, D.P.A., R.Z. Rispicio, an act to authorize the use of local funds for matching of grants available from the Veterans Affairs State Cemetery Grants Program and to approve a conceptual capital improvement plan relative to the expansion of the Guam Veterans Cemetery.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada?
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada?
Yes.
Senator Blas? Vice Speaker Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Duñez?
Yes.
Senator Guthertz?
Yes.
Senator Mabini?
Yes.
Senator Munya Barnes?
Aye.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Panglinen?
Yes.
Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez?
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron?
Aye.
Speaker One-Pat?
Aye.
Bill Number 363-31 received 15 yea votes. Bill Number 363-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 365-31 LS.
Bill Number 365-31 LS, amended on the floor, introduced by Judith P. Guthertz, D.P.A., T.R. Munya Barnes, an act on man Section 40113B-19 of Chapter 40, Title 5, Guam Code Annotated, relative to placing the Tagachang Beach Park under the administrative authority of the Office of the Mayor of Jonia.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada?
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada?
Yes.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Duñez?
Yes.
Senator Guthertz?
Yes.
Senator Mabini?
Yes.
Senator Munya Barnes?
Yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Panglinen?
Yes.
Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez?
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron?
Aye.
Speaker One-Pat?
Aye.
Senator Yamashita?
Sorry, Bill Number 365-31 received 15 yea votes. Therefore, Bill 365-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 366-31 LS.
Bill Number 366-31 LS, amended by the Committee on Public Safety, Law Enforcement, and Judiciary, introduced by Adolfo B. Palacios Sr., an act on man Subsection C and to add a new subsection D of Section 4401 of Article 4, Chapter 4, Division 1, Title 7, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the authority of magistrate judges.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada?
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada?
Yes.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Duñez?
Yes.
Senator Guthertz?
Yes.
Senator Mabini?
Yes.
Senator Munya Barnes?
Aye.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Panglinen?
Aye.
Senator Rispicio? Yes.
Senator Rodriguez?
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron?
Aye.
Speaker One-Pat?
Aye.
Senator Yamashita?
Bill Number 366-31 received 15 yea votes. Bill 366-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 386-31 COR.
Bill Number 386-31 COR, substituted by the Committee on Public Safety, Law Enforcement, and Judiciary, introduced by B.J.F. Cruz, F.F. Blas Jr., an act on man Item F of Appendix A and Item B of Appendix D and to repeal Section 67.801 of Article 8, all of Chapter 67 of Title 9, Guam Code Annotated, relative to listing salvia divinorum or salvinorum A and certain synthetic drugs as Schedule 1 substances and listing carisoprodol as a Schedule 4 substance under the Guam Uniform Control Substance Act.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada?
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada?
Yes.
Senator Blas?
Senator Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I think, Madam Speaker, with regards to the title of the, of the bill, it should be, it should intend to repeal Section 67.801 of Article 8 of Chapter 67, not all of Chapter 67.
Oh, okay.
We don't, it is not intent to repeal all of Chapter 67.
One second. That's where all the sections come from, so that's the reason for the language being placed in.
We just want to make sure that's clarified.
Okay. Yes. Okay. Yes, thank you.
Vice Speaker Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Duñez?
Yes.
Senator Guthertz?
Yes.
Senator Mabini?
Yes.
Senator Munya Barnes?
Yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Panglinen?
Yes.
Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez?
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron?
Aye.
Speaker One-Pat?
Aye.
Senator Yamashita?
Bill Number 386-31 received 15 votes, yea votes, therefore, 386-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 323-31 COR.
Bill Number 323-31 COR, amended on the floor, introduced by D.G. Rodriguez Jr., an act to add a new Chapter 4, 8, to Division 1 of Title 19, Guam Code Annotated, relative to requiring parental consent for the conduct of an abortion upon a minor.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada?
Please, wait one second before the vote's taken. Senator Palacios, please state.
What happens, Speaker, this is Bill 323?
Yes.
On the penalty, I just detected that actually on line 9, Page 10, any person not authorized to provide consent is guilty of a felony in the third degree, and on 9/11 is for the misdemeanor, because just coercing a minor.
Yes, you are correct, Senator.
So, so that one actually would have to be flipped.
Yes, so, councilors, they can note a bit, yes. There are two, two-floor amendments. That was the second-floor amendment, to make it consistent with the first, that from a misdemeanor to a third.
And actually, actually, Item D on line 11 is just not amended, it remained a misdemeanor.
Yes, on that line, like on page 9, line 14 says guilty of a felony, felony of the third degree, and an amendment was also made for page 10.
Line 9.
Line 10. Line 10.
Line 10, I'm sorry, line.
Guilty of the same language, felony of the third degree. No, yes, on page 10, line 12, it should be, I mean, on line 10, I'm sorry, guilty for felony of a third degree. It was to make it consistent throughout the bill.
Yes, and the D actually is not amended.
Yeah, the D remained.
Remained, a misdemeanor.
Okay, so noted, Senator, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So we can proceed with the vote. Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthertz. Senator Mabini. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Rispicio.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker One-Pat.
Ongan.
Senator Yamashita. Senator Tom Ada. Bill number 323-31 received 15 yay votes. Bill 323 is unanimously passed by this body.
Bill number 138-31 LS is substituted by the Committee on Municipal Affairs, Tourism, Housing, and Recreation and amended on the floor, introduced by V.C. Pangolinan, Judith T. One-Pat E.D.D., T.R. Munya Barnes, Judith P. Guthertz, D.P.A. An act to repeal and reenact Article 7 relative to the Guam Housing Corporation's First Time Homeowner Assistance Program and to add a new Article 10 relative to the Housing Trust Fund Act, all of Chapter 4, Title 12 Guam Code Annotated, and to amend Section 5, Section 11c as repealed and reenacted by Public Law 26-123 and Section 12, all of Public Law 20-210.
Senator Ada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On page six, line nine, I believe during the discussion, an inquiry was made as to how is natural person defined and had requested that legal counsel put in the, including the definitions.
This is the new amendment that was recommended.
I'm sorry.
This is the new amendment that was recommended. Or the natural?
Yeah, the natural person is not a corporation or somebody like that. Yeah, I guess it's a term of art that many of us are not familiar with, so.
One moment.
So I think it's probably just a technical amendment that the legal counsel can take care of without, you know, further delaying it.
As soon as I hear from a legal counsel.
Under the U.S. Constitution, right, Citizens United, corporations are persons.
Under advisement by legal counsel. That she's going to look at it because to see whether there'll be a need to actually put a definition down or not and that based when she reads it, she will be, before it is sent out, that she would confer with you and I. Is she okay? All right, so roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthertz. Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker One-Pat.
Ongan.
Bill number 138-31 received 15 yay votes. Bill number 138-31 is unanimously passed by this body. Bill number 384-31 COR.
Bill number 384-31 COR is substituted by the Committee on Education and Public Libraries and amended on the floor, introduced by Judith T. One-Pat E.D.D., V.C. Pangolinan, Sam Mabini, Ph.D., T.R. Munya Barnes. An act to extend the deadline to submit petitions to establish the Francisco Q. Sanchez School as an academy charter school.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthertz. Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker One-Pat.
Ongan.
Bill number 384-31 received 14 yay votes and one nay. Bill number 384-31 is duly passed by this body. Senator Rispicio.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, on the matter of that override, I move that it just be revert back to motions.
On that motion without any objection, so ordered. Thank you, Senator. We are then on bill 401-31 LS.
Bill number 401-31 LS introduced by V.C. Pangolinan. An act to exempt maps of the Tomorrowland Trust leave sites previously approved by the Tomorrowland Trust Commission from the requirements of Article 21, Chapter 62 of the Guam Code Annotated relative to subdivision and recordation procedures.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthertz. Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker One-Pat. Bill number 401-31 received 15 yay votes. Bill number 401 is duly passed by this body. Congratulations and Merry Christmas, Senator Pangolinan. We're going to take a brief recess, Senators. Okay, so the legislature's back in session. I want to make sure that everybody is in here now after your quick restroom break to do the appointments. So on the appointment of Mr. William D. Berry to serve as a member of the Guam Building Code Council, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Berry then has received unanimous support and is duly confirmed. On the appointment of Mr. John P. Duñez to serve as a member of the Guam Building Code Council, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. John P. Duñez is unanimously confirmed by this body. On the appointment of Ms. Sanchan P. Guerrero to serve as a member of the Guam Commission for Educator Certification, all in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Sanchan P. Guerrero is unanimously confirmed by this body. On the appointment of Mr. Joey Cruz-Seniquel to serve as the chief of the Guam Fire Department, roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthertz. Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker One-Pat.
Ongan.
Senator Yamashita. On the appointment of Mr. Joey Cruz-Seniquel to serve as chief of the Guam Fire Department, received 15 yay votes and one nay. Mr. Joey Cruz-Seniquel is duly confirmed by this body to serve as the chief of the Guam Fire Department. On the appointment of Ms. Feliciano T. Tynatongo to serve as a youth member of the Parks and Recreations Committee, all in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Feliciano T. Tynatongo received unanimous support and she is duly confirmed by this Senator Rispicio, you're recognized for motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I move that we adjourn subject to call of the speaker.
On that motion without any objections, so, well, Merry Christmas, everybody, and Happy New Year.